I would invite you to stand and join us in the invocation by Commissioner Stanboff, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Booker.
To Heavenly Father, we stand humbly before you this evening to ask for your blessing, your guidance, and your wisdom as we go through our deliberations this evening. And Lord, I would ask that you watch over our first responders, the men and women of our armed forces, who stand guard here and abroad to keep us safe and keep a way of life as blessed as it is. And Lord, I would ask that you reach out your helping hand, comfort, and offer solace to those people in Barcelona, Spain, from the terrorist attack that they suffered this evening. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have any public comment, uh, don't have any public comments tonight. The commission presentations and announcements, I'd like to recognize Jessica Manger, John Stockwell, and Olivia Pruitt for their life-saving efforts performed on Saturday, August the 5th at the Coast Guard Station on St. Simon's Island. Mr. Powell. It's not Mr. Powell.
Chief Jordan couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here on his behalf to give these awards. As we provide emergency services to Glen County, we have a chance to act and affect people's lives. We have a duty to act. We're trained to act. Every once in a while, we get to arrive on scene and see people that have taken upon their health to act. So we have these awards given to citizens to act to affect another's life. We have two county employees, and I believe it was a visitor to Glen County that stepped in and saved a young boy's life. I'm gonna call them up here one at a time and give them their award. I'm gonna start with Mr. John Stockwell. He's one of our county employees. John Stockwell, in recognition of life-saving efforts that took place on Saturday, August 5th, 2017, at St. Simon's Island, Glen County, Georgia. John Stockwell did render aid to Reuben Elliott after a water event that posed a life-threatening issue to Reuben. John's immediate actions helped prevent serious injury or death and resulted in the saving of Reuben's life. For these actions, with the approval and authority of Glen County Board of Commissioners, and on behalf of Chief Randy Jordan, Glen County Fire Chief, we'd like to present you with this meritorious citation. Thank you. Olivia Pruitt, now I don't believe could be here, but her mother's here. Come on up. In recognition of the life-saving efforts that took place on Saturday, August 5th, 2017, at St. Simon's Island, Glen County, Georgia, Olivia Pruitt did render aid to Reuben Elliott after a water event that posed a life-threatening issue to Reuben. Olivia's immediate actions helped prevent a serious injury or death and resulted in the saving of Reuben's life. For these actions, with approval and authority of Glen County Board of Commissioners, and on behalf of the Fire Chief Randy Jordan, we'd like to present her with this meritorious citation. She's a nurse and was visiting and saw the duty to act. She is going to receive a life-saving award. In recognition of life-saving efforts that took place on Saturday, August 5th, 2017, at St. Simon's Island, Glen County, Georgia, Jessica Manger did render aid to Reuben Elliott after a water event that posed a life-threatening issue to Reuben. Jessica's immediate actions prevented a serious injury or death and resulted in the saving of Reuben's life. For these actions, and with approval of Glen County Board of County Commissioners and Fire Chief Randy Jordan, we're gonna present you with this life-saving award along with this certificate. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that this young lady, not only did she save this young boy's life, but she came from South Florida to South Georgia to spend part of her vacation up here. And today, she drove up from Miami, is that not correct? To be with us this evening. So, once again, thank you so much for everything that you did.
Well, it was a very blessed child to have had the three of you there and with the knowledge to do what you did. And we're certainly blessed to have folks on our staff as well as folks that are available and will step up. And so, thank you very much for all you did. Public hearing items: alcohol beverage license. Public hearings will be held at 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be appreciated. Consider the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Colleen Hunter for Chatters Casual Cafe, Inc., DBA Chatters Scratch Kickin' Chicken Kitchen. Chicken, 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 kitchen, 551 Canal Road, Brunswick, Georgia. Chief. Very good, Mr. Chairman. If it pleases the Commissioners, Ms. Hunter, there you are, sorry, is in the audience as is required, and she meets the requirements for your consideration for issuance of the license. This is a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application may do so.
I'm Julian Smith, and I'd like to speak in favor of all four of these applications. After the day I had today, I'm glad that we have plenty of places of refuge on the, in the county and on the island. And by the time we're finished with this, the public hearings tonight, I think some of you are going to be ready to sample some of the fare on these fine places. Thank you.
We're not gonna issue a license unless they cater. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Motion to approve the license for Chatters.
Second?
Motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, didn't we already approve this? Were we changing?
Well, we did. The change in ownerships, the managers, ownership and manager, so the license is to the manager.
Ah.
So, you know.
Thank you for the special call. Anyway, appreciate that.
Several, several.
And let me tell you, I love Chatters. I've already eaten there seven times, so, you know.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the application signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Consider the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to David Snyder for LA Plac, Planchala Restaurant Corp., 3600 Frederica Road, 16 St. Simon's Island, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, are we talking about this item three? Yes. Okay. I'm not sure how you pronounce that. Okay. Mr. Snyder is present.
Mr. Snyder, would you edify us there? For the record.
It's La Pancha, you gringos. And you're from Pennsylvania.
La Pancha. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes, sir.
La Pancha.
Mr. Snyder, meet the requirements for your consideration for issuance of license. All right. It is a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application may do so. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition may do so. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You have a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Number four, consider the transfer of licenseee for 2017 alcohol beverage license issued to Tokan's Ale House, 2450 Perry Lane Road, Brunswick. Chief. Mr. Harris? Doug Harris? Douglas Harris? I don't see any response for the applicant who is required. Shall we just hold this until the end of the meeting, see if he shows up? In the meantime? Sounds like a plan. Thank you. Number five, consider the transfer of license for 2017 alcohol beverage license issued to Outback Steakhouse, 1609 Frederica Road, St. Simon's Island. Chief Dorn. Yes, thank you. Ms. Margus? There you are. I saw you earlier. Mr. Margus is present in the audience. He's standing up, and he meets the requirements for your consideration for issuance of license. It's a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application may do so. Any opposition? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Public hearing, milage rates.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the applicants are not required to stay, but you certainly are welcome.
But, and we would welcome nourishment about 11:30. Thank you. Good luck to you, all of you. All right. Number six, received citizen comments regarding the proposed 2017 milage rates. And again, the, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am going to give a very brief presentation, and then we'll obviously have our public hearing on the milage rate. This is one of three public hearings that are required by state law. So when we got the preliminary numbers from the 2017 digest, we were in the budget process. The estimated growth that we got from the property appraisers office was 4% to 6%. So at 4% growth, we estimated that we needed about two mils of county maintenance and operations and about a half a mil for fire maintenance and operations. The actual growth came in, it was actually 5.86%. So the county MNO that we're requesting is 1.71 mils, and for fire is 4.0 mils. In looking back at the budget, when we were developing this budget, we knew that in FY14 we used about $1.2 million of fund balance, which is the amount that we have in reserves. In FY15, we had to use about $2.7 million, and then in FY16, we used $7.3 million. So it is, our reserves are down lower, and it is not good to deplete our savings accounts in the event we have something like Matthew happen, Hurricane Matthew, and then we have reserves set aside so that we can have the cash to fund that. In the FY17, 18 budget, there are many increases to the budget, and I've highlighted one here, which is the top priority in the strategic plan that the Commissioners ended up voting on. The top priority was public safety. So in our police department, we've increased their salaries. To have competitive pay, the state of Georgia increased salaries for public safety across the state by 20% beginning at the, beginning of this calendar year. So beginning at the beginning of July 1, our public safety officers got a 10% increase in their pay. So that equated to overtime and additional $548,000, and that is also because we budgeted the same overtime numbers for about four fiscal years in a row. And because there's slippage in salaries, we've been able to cover that number, but that has caught up with us, so we had to put more money in overtime. And then I just thought we would point out that there have been the same number of road patrol officers on the road since 2007, and in this budget, there's six new officers included for FY18. This is the milage rate history overtime. Now this goes back to 1976. That is that point right here. So you can see here, we were at nine and a half, and that's about 1989. And then it has gone down, gone down, gone down, and then this year is the first time there's an increase. I believe it's in 28 years. So how does it impact the average citizen? This example is provided for districts three and four. District four is St. Simon's Island. District three is Ballard and Blythe Island, and that is the highest percentage of increase over last year's milage rate. So you can see at the top, it's $100,000. So for each $100,000, if you're in these districts, your taxes will increase approximately $84.40 per year. You can see here, the county's portion is 1.71 mils, and the fire's portion is .4 mils. Now for the public, I have put a lot of these sheets on the back table so that they can take them with them if they would like to, and then of course, anyone's always welcome to call if they have questions about their specific milage rate. So in the newspaper, we had to advertise that we have to do our advertisement a certain way. And so the newspaper ad said, "A Notice of Property Tax Increase," and it shows that it's a 33% increase for most of the county, while Jekyll Island's increase showed a bit more. And we're gonna go through each of those and show whether it's really a 33% increase or not. So shown here, you see the entire milage rate for districts three and four. And that is the school, the county maintenance and operations, fire, and capital. So the new milage rate is 26.110. The old milage rate is 24. So the actual percentage increase on their actual tax bill will be 8.8%. And again, we'll go into why that 33% had to be advertised, but the total milage rate increase is 8.8%. So the increase for everyone else, district one, city of Brunswick, is 4.8%. The outlying area, that's district two, is 7.7%. District five is Sea Island, that's 8.7%, and district six, for Jekyll Island, is 7.9%. Now for each of those calculations, I've also provided on the back table a small sheet for anyone in these districts so they can take it with them, and it shows by district what milage rate they're paying, and what it went from, and what the final milage rate This is a tax map. It's a GIS map that shows tax districts. So you can see on this map, one is city of Brunswick, two is outlying, it's the western part of the county, and then a little St. Simon's is included there, and then there's a bit just south of the city of Brunswick. And then six, of course, is Jekyll Island, five is Sea Island, and four is St. Simon's Island. And then three is the remainder. It's described as Ballard and Blythe Island. And I have this map here. I will put it again on this table outside if anyone would like to view it after the meeting, or I'll put it as soon as I'm done with my presentation so they can see which district they're in if they don't know. These maps are also available on our county website, of course, which is www.glencounty.org. So where do my taxes go? This is our old, the current milage rate. So you'll see that fire has 7% of the milage rate, capital has 2%, county MNO is 24%, and the school taxes are 67%. So with the proposed milage rate, that changes just a bit to capital's still at 2%, fire up 1% at 8%, county MNO goes up 4% at 28%, and school drops to 62% of the taxes. Do residents of Jekyll Island pay more? They do not. Jekyll Island has a lower county maintenance and operations milage rate because there's a partial insurance premium rollback, and then there's also a rollback for duplication of services. As you know, there are many services that Jekyll Island does not receive that the rest of the county does, so we roll their milage rate back. But when we print the five-year history in the paper, we are required to print what the milage rate is, and then we roll it up to what the gross would have been had we not applied those milage rates. So it looks like there's a greater percentage, but if you take the sheets and you look at what your actual taxes will be, the percentages are the ones that I gave earlier. So for Jekyll Island, it was 8.1%. So why all the advertisements? We've had three advertisements in the paper, and that's because of the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, which was passed during the 1999 legislative session. It was effective 1/1 of 2000, and it was a prevention of indirect tax increases if there are increases resulting to inflation for existing property values. So in the tax digest, you can either have increases because we have inflation, or you can have increases because we have newer improved property. So any of that inflation, we have to account for separately because at the end of the day, if we reassess properties and there are a higher tax value, then we get more tax dollars from that property. So we have to do these calculations, and I've provided an example of a calculation. I know this is very tiny, but this takes into account all the pieces of the property tax digest, and then you have this reassessment column. So then down at the bottom, it tells you, we would have had to roll back the milage rate to 5.534 mils if to get the same dollar amount that we got last year. So that's why we have to take only our portion, which went to 7.383 mils, down to 5.534, and that difference yields a 33% difference. That's why we have to advertise that way. It's the Taxpayer Property Bill of Rights. This is from the document from the property appraisers office. Again, it's very tiny, but it shows all the districts and the numbers in the digest from inflation or from growth. And then down at the bottom, the net growth right here is 5.86 that we stated earlier. So again, in the budget process, we anticipated about 4%. We anticipated a two mil increase in the general funds, maintenance, and operation, but we only needed 1.71 to come to the dollar amount that we needed for the budget that we passed. And then similarly, we looked at a half a mil for the fire fund, but we only needed .4 mils at the end of the day when the digest numbers came in. So in the future, if the economy continues to improve, we will have to do all of this advertising if we leave the milage rate the same. Just like last year, we left the milage rate the same, but because of that rollback, and we're leaving the milage rate the same, we have to advertise three advertisements, we have to hold three public hearings, and we have to put all of that in the paper to meet those requirements of the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. But in the future, we just try to tell everyone again that we're probably going to be doing it again if the commission chooses to leave milage rates the same. So do you have any questions?
Questions for staff?
Could you re-explain that 33%?
Absolutely. So the 33%, let me go back just a bit here. How about if I start over, actually? So this is the entire milage rate. So the entire milage rate is 26.11% if we approve the increases on the milage rate. When we did the calculation, we take this portion, only 7.383, divided by the 5.534, which was that calculation of what would we have had to roll only our milage rate back to, to derive the same tax dollars? So just our portion would be a 33% increase for the county milage rate. But the entire impact to the citizen is the whole milage rate, not just the counties, which results in about $84.40. So the 33% is only on a piece of the entire milage rate.
So you divided the five-point whatever by the seven-point. How'd you get the 33%?
The difference in 7.383 and 5.534 is one point, it's just a little over 1.71 because it includes the rollback rate. That divided by the old milage rate of 5.534 yields that 33%.
Okay. I got you.
And the state is very specific on the exact language and the exact calculation, how it has to be presented.
Regardless of calculation, am I correct that whether it comes through a 5.9% property value increase or a straight milage increase, tax is still going up two mils for the county and .5 mils for the fire department?
No, that is not correct. So at the end of the day, we did not need the entire milage rate that we talked about through the public hearings, and we said through that when the final digest comes in, we're hopeful it will come in at more than 4% growth, and we'll back off that milage rate. So we did back off.
You will, I understand, but you'll still generate the same amount of revenue that the 2.5 mil rate would have done if no, had there been no property increases. 2.5 mil would have generated X revenue.
We calculated that.
Because it went up 5.9%, we can drop it to 1.71% to still generate the same revenue because now the property is valued at a higher rate, correct?
Right. Instead of our calculations at 4%.
Right. So basically, everybody's taxes are going up 2.5 mil because part of that is the milage increase, and part of it is the evaluation of their property, correct?
That is not correct.
There are also additional properties added to the digest.
Right. And I'll be glad to show you all of the spreadsheets when we do that calculation.
Appreciation. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open this up for public comments, and remember, it's 30 minutes for each side and five minutes for each speaker. And those wishing to speak in favor of the milage increase may come to the podium. Mr. Smith, would you like to speak in favor of it? You need to get five minutes here, anyway.
Thank you. I'm Julian Smith. And don't get mad at me yet. I have to have mixed feelings about the milage increase. I wouldn't mind this increase if I thought the increased revenue would actually benefit those citizens who need help. So I'm gonna be very optimistic, and I'm going to willingly suspend my disbelief in your ability to spend money wisely. Now, as most of you know, I spent more than $10,000 last year on newspaper advertisements and ugly billboards in opposition to SPOSS 2016. Here we are, you want more tax revenues. Let me just summarize for you today how I saw my life savings being depleted. At 2:00, I met with an attorney who told me it would probably cost $25,000 to $30,000 to hire a competent attorney to defend me in court should I decide to ask for jury trial as a result of my arrest on July 4th on the basis of false charges by someone who was unhappy about my efforts to clean up her neighborhood in Brunswick Villa. Had code enforcement been spending our money more wisely, perhaps the problem would not have started. Then I spent nearly $600 for an advertisement that will appear in the Brunswick News tomorrow or on Saturday about an issue that is fairly important to this county and this state and this nation. At 4:00, I was dealing with the fact that someone broke into the house, the historic house I've been rehabbing in Brunswick Villa, a 75-year-old house, broke the very expensive new back door and window to get in and steal almost all of my power tools and my favorite hammer and my measuring tape.
Mr. Smith?
These are the cost of doing business here. So if you can spend that money to help prevent the kinds of problems I see almost every day. So if you can spend that money to help prevent the kinds of problems I see almost every day in Glen County, go for it. Increase it more next year. Have fun.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the millage?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chuck Cook. I've just recently retired and moved to the area, and I want to tell you, I spent a lot of my career working for government, and I want to tell you, people don't always realize this, but government is probably one of the best values you'll ever get for your dollar. Everyone laughs, but you think about it. We educate children, we provide free, well, free, well, you pay, but I mean, everyone gets fire and police service, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. We have parks, we have people guarding the beaches, we have everything, and everyone thinks, well, those are just, they take it for granted. But here we have a little bit of a power to decide, you know, if things go up a little bit, then they do. When I go to the grocery store, I don't have any decision, either if things go up in price, then I just don't buy them, or else I just eat the price. But anyway, government really is a bargain because you do get a lot of services, and obviously tonight, from seeing the awards that were given, there's some very dedicated employees. So I think people ought to have a little perspective on that and realize that they're doing well by having government taking care of the things around you that make your life pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the millage increase? Seeing none? Those wishing to speak in opposition to the millage increase?
Let you know I am. Jeff Kilgore, I'm affiliated with an organization that ran a number of newspaper advertisements, and in those advertisements, we consistently said that the property tax increase would do 40%. Some of you took issue with that and claimed actually that it was a lie, that it was intended to misrepresent the truth to the people. But I see your exhibit here, and I see an increase of almost $10 million in property taxes showing a percentage increase of property taxes, and I was wrong. It wasn't 40%, it's 41.29%. So it's smaller than we ever said in the advertisements, and I think that's significant note. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Date your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Watson. I live in Glenhaven on St. Simon's Island. I've been there for 12 years. When I first came, I enjoyed living here. I was able to find a job, and my children went to school here. Now, I can't get a job. I'm over 50 years old, and I'm supposed to be invisible, I guess. I was laid off from my full-time position in 2011. I have not recovered from that. It's been very difficult for me. However, I have paid my taxes on time every year. I appreciate the services and the responses I've gotten from county officials. However, there has been some malfeasance here in this county, not unique to Georgia counties, I'm sure, but I feel like it's unfair to place the burden of catching up on infrastructure and fixing things that were not done the right way. It should not be the burden of the property owners. My taxes, my tax bill has not gone down once since I've lived here, and I understand it's because values go up and they go down, and rates go up and down. But, you know, I need a break. I don't feel like I should pay for county employees to sit in a rocking chair at the casino building on St. Simon's. That sort of rubs me a little the wrong way. I don't think we should pay for the money that went missing in the clerk of court's office. These sort of issues make our community look sort of bad, and I don't like that. I care about Glen County. Now, people aren't here tonight because this is the time of year where all those beachfront homes are being rented out. Those people aren't here, and they're not here to speak. Some of them live in Iowa and don't care about Glen County because they don't live here. Their property management companies paying their tax bill for them, and they probably don't even look at it. Okay? So you are not really reaching the real property owners, or not all of them, I'm sure, with your newspaper advertisement, I mean. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the millage increase? Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. There will be two more town hall meetings. When will those be again? 22nd at the casino, and then the 24th here at the courthouse, so at 6:00. All right, Public Hays Land Use, item number 7. ZM 3491, consider request to amend portions of the existing planned development text of the peninsula at Golden Isles located off Buck Swamp Road approximately 3.5 miles from US Highway 17. Liz Grabowski.
This zoning modification is for an existing planned development. Oops, excuse me, I'm sorry. Operator error. There we go. This is located in the southern part of the county off of Buck Swamp Road. Location is shown here in the aerial of the property. This is the entrance to the property as it exists today. The property was originally placed into a planned development back in 2007 at this time by Spring Tide Communities in Yankee Landing. The Phase 1 portion of that planned development went forward, and that's about 208 lots located on the front part of the property. The balance of the property has transferred ownership, and the details of which are in your staff report. I'm happy to cover that in more detail if you would like. And there have also been conservation easements placed on the property by the new owners, which have resulted in their request to modify the planned development text to reflect those conservation easements. The property is about just over 3,300 acres. And just as a reminder, in your July 20th Board of Commissioners meeting, there were three agenda items that you reviewed and approved that are related to this particular development. The first was the abandonment of the Rose and Drainage Easements and the Peninsula at Golden Isles subdivision Phase 1, so that's the existing 208 lots. There were two water and sewer variances. Those two variances addressed Phase 1 of the property, and the second water and sewer variance addresses the balance of the remaining property for the 1,300 lot area off of Buck Swamp Road. For this PD amendment, there are a number of amendments that are requested. The first ones I'll cover are for the development as a whole. They are requesting to rename the development to the Lakeside at Longwood, so that would be the existing subdivision, and the remainder of the development would be referred to as Longwood, and then any subsequent development throughout the property would reflect that Longwood name. These names have been reviewed with GIS for consistency with our GIS ordinance. In addition, they are requesting in the PD text for Section H to modify the wastewater treatment provisions. The original provisions that were outlined in the PD text when it was established in 2007 did not come to fruition, which is why they then came before you for the water and sewer variances at your July meeting. The second modification that is requested is for the result of the four conservation easements. The original PD text allowed 4,454 units. Of those units, 208 have been developed. The conservation easements remove 2,934 lots from the development, so the dwelling units remaining will be 1,312. They've also modified their master plan, which I'll show you, that exhibit in just a moment, and as a result of that modification, they have reassigned the labels that were used in the previous master plan to now reflect their current master plan. And in particular, I want to point out the three areas that are highlighted in red, as these would be the more village-type centers that are potentially going to be located in the development, and the remainder of the property will be larger lot, single-family, residential, and recreational areas. They are asking for modification to the land use designation to allow for a sporting club as part of the development, and the revised master plan is shown here. The light tan areas are the residential lots that are modified in the plan, and then those village areas that I pointed out a moment ago would be located here around Buck Swamp Road, as well as potentially here and here in the development. In reviewing the requirements of a zoning modification, staff has found that the proposed change in use is minor and will permit a use that is suitable for the area. The zoning proposal will not adversely affect the usability of adjacent or nearby property, that the property does have economic use as currently zoned. As far as the provisions of making sure there's no burdens to existing streets, transportation, facilities, utilities, or school, language in regards to that coordination is included in the PD text. The zoning proposal does conform with our current comprehensive plan, and the voluntary placement of the conservation easement supports the change in the number of units as specified in their rezoning request. This was heard before the Mainland Planning Commission, and the Mainland Planning Commission, as well as staff, both recommend approval of these zoning amendments as requested, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff?
I got a question. You said that, I think backed up the first part of this right here, you said that y'all had approved the, I guess you'd say, the use of the land for all the things on this project list up here. And you remember, last time this came up, I had a big objection to the septic tank issue.
Yes, sir.
And when do we get to the PERT test and stuff like that to find out if indeed this is going to happen? I mean, is that when each individual applies for their permit?
Yes, sir. Each septic tank will require a permit from the Health Department that demonstrates that the land is in fact suitable to support a septic system, and will have to meet all county requirements for that.
So what happens if it's not?
Then there are provisions that they can look at, change in the lot sizes, or make other modifications, and there may be areas where they're not able to do a septic tank. But what this does is this changes the language that's in the planned development text to be able to allow them to move forward with septic tanks as opposed to the step system that was originally proposed. But all of those will have to be permitted as the development moves forward.
So basically, what we're saying here, this is allowing the developer to move forward with his plans to develop this property and turn around and sell it to the individual lot owners that don't know whether they're going to pass a PERT test or not.
No, sir. Actually, they would have to come in, when they go through the plat process, we would look at making sure that the lots as platted do in fact support a septic system. So this is just the rezoning, and then the creation of the individual lots will go through our full subdivision review process, and I anticipate will be developed in phases, and the applicant can certainly speak to that more.
So when you get to that point, what happens if you come up with a chunk of this dirt out there that's not susceptible to septic tanks?
They can either bring in soil that is suitable and would support a septic system, or they may have to make modifications based on the suitability of the soil. But no building permit would be issued until they are able to demonstrate that they have received the approval for that septic tank from the Health Department.
So for an individual property owner that would purchase one of these lots to build a house with all these amenities to go with it, could possibly down the road have a tremendous amount of added expense to prepare that piece of property to put a septic tank in the ground?
Typically, when a property is going to be served by a septic tank, that's part of the due diligence that would be done to ensure that a septic tank can in fact be supported on that property.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm still, still, what I'm saying is the PERT test is the final say.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So all this other stuff out here is done until you get to the final say?
Yes, sir, and this is the first step.
Okay. So I mean, that's what I would like it to be known to the property, the people that are looking at these lots to buy it, to build how homes on, that they be reminded that there was some questions, pretty, I think, important questions that need to be asked about the percolation of the soil out there and its relation to the surrounding environment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, can I ask a question, please? So in this, it says to allow the sporting club is in allowed use?
Yes, sir.
You skipped over that real quickly. Tell us, tell us what we're doing.
Back to the master plan.
It was right above that one.
The sporting club and...
You had a list of, you had a print of it.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Perfect.
Was it on this one? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes. So they are asking for the, one of the uses to allow for a sporting club, including but not limited to shooting sports, hunting, and/or game preserve. All hunting and/or shooting experiences will be conducted utilizing all safety standards adopted by the State of Georgia requirement for firearms. And those hunting areas, as I understand it, and the applicant may be able to speak to it more, are located in this general area, and this would be the closest area of residential lots on the opposite side of this proposed street here. And again, this is the conceptual master plan, and any of these lots would come back before you enter the final plat, and the preliminary plat would be reviewed by the Mainland Planning Commission.
Am I the only one that finds this kind of incredible, that we're hunting in the middle of a neighborhood?
I think one of the things that's difficult to tell from this exhibit is the size of the property.
Right, right. So educate me. I guess that's what I'm asking.
Right. And actually, the provision about including, complying with state standards, that was added at the request of staff to address similar concern that you have. And in our current ordinances, we spoke with code enforcement to see if there was additional requirements that we currently have in the county about hunting in proximity to residential units, which we do not have. Therefore, they would fall under the same guidance and regulations as hunting in other areas of the county where hunting is allowed. But I think, you know, the applicant's may be able to speak to that more. There are various types of hunting. I'm not sure what types if they plan to, you know, allow for bow hunting or exactly what their plans are, but I do know that they've identified on their master plan, I believe these are the areas they've identified for quail hunting. areas they've identified for quail hunting, which are separated by wooded area, some distance from the residential development. But again, the applicant can speak more to any of the provisions that they anticipate including in that.
Thank you. If I'm not mistaken, isn't there a state law that prohibits firing a gun in a residential area in proximity to a highway or something like that?
Yes, sir. At my understanding, there are distance regulation, there are distance requirements in state law, which is exactly why staff asked that that specific provision be included in their PD text amendment, to further reiterate the importance of maintaining those distances as required by state law.
So can you tell us right now what the distance is between the closest residential dwellings and where this hunting preserve or hunting zone is supposed to be?
This is, in the conceptual master plan, I don't know if I can zoom in.
I'm going to get him here in a second.
They show Observation and Pheasant Tower here, stand and the quail plantation, sporting clay area. And these would be the residential lots located here as far as the distance and the proximity. I would ask the applicant if they have more detailed information that they can share. And if, so elected by the board, we certainly can include some more specific provisions about distances between any hunting areas and residential units, if that is your-
These types of developments, I think, are, there are a lot of them. And Dorchester-
Yes, sir.
Same type thing. Chief Don, would you like to talk about the law related to-
Sure. There is no current law says there's any minimum distance from a house or residence. Ryder Cross was developing as a dog hunting deer club, and they run dogs all through that area. I own property. And right behind my property, they run dogs, so there's no minimum distance to a residence. The state law says you cannot hunt, or shoot, or discharge a firearm within 50 yards of a public street. If these are private, then that would not even apply. The only thing that's applicable would be the use of such firearms in a reckless manner, but that would apply for anyone, anywhere.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions for staff? With the applicant, or anyone wishing to speak, and this is a public hearing item, in favor of the application, please come forward.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jim Bishop. I represent the applicant. Tippel Hill is here with Shoot and Surveying. He also is here on behalf of the applicant tonight. And we have, we have gone through an enormous, very expensive planning process. Commissioner Murphy, I understand your concern about a hunting arrangement in a neighborhood, but I can assure you that there's not going to be hunting anywhere close to a residential community. And we've looked at that very extensively. And Tippel Hill, this is a big piece of property. Commissioner Browning, I think, is the only one that has been on, out there with me. And you can ride literally for miles and miles and miles to try to cover 3,300 acres. And frankly, wonder if you ever can get to the end of it. The property has been downsized substantially, so the number of residential units out there is reduced very substantially, but from a practical perspective, will be reduced even more in spite of the numerical computation of that. So it's very carefully planned. It's, it's a future development. They have spent a lot of money on this and propose to spend somewhere in, well, over a million dollars on an amenities center. Y'all have already taken action in order to allow septic tanks. And I guess, to your point, Mr. Coleman, it has, the, my clients have no intention of selling a home site out there that does not pass the process that'll be able to accommodate a septic tank. The lots, some of them will be, have to be enlarged, they already enlarged, to be honest, in the first phase. And the back phase will be years down the road. So have to accommodate, as Ms. Grabowski said, the requirements of the, of the Health Department. That's, that's first and foremost. Anyway, Tippel Hill's here, and he is probably more competent to answer the question about the area that has been designated for the, for the uses. We have worked hand in glove, by the way, with Thomason Hutton, very respected engineering company, to develop the master plan out here, and with your staff, by the way, who we would like to compliment. And we have been back and forth, back and forth, attempting to make every accommodation that's been requested of us, and I think we've done that. Happy to answer any questions, but Tippel Hill can probably answer better than I can. Tipp, you want to add anything to that?
Questions for the applicant? And if, sir, if you would identify yourself and-
Tippel Hill with Shoot and Surveying. Just to kind of clarify a little bit on the shooting sports, if you look at the circle that's the pheasant tower, from that circle down to the point at the end of the map, you're looking at about a mile and a half. So it's, the site is enormous. From the shooting sports to the lots, you're looking at, you know, probably from the pheasant tower to that first set of lots on the northeast, probably 2,000 feet. And this is all shotgun sports. You know, the pellets don't fly very far, so that shouldn't be an issue with the shooting sports.
How about sound?
It's just like buying next to an airport. I mean, you don't buy out here, if guns are a problem, you don't buy next to an airport, you know, if you have a problem with planes. I mean, it's just something that you go into this neighborhood knowing what you're, you're buying.
And kids, and, you know, curious kids that venture out into the woods, is there any provision other than their parents telling them?
I'm sure, I'm sure there's going to be stuff put in place for safety.
Right.
You know, any of your, your shooting preserve are well-posted. I'm sure in some of the closer proximity to the stands, the five stand, the pheasant tower, and the sporting clays, there will be barriers.
So fencing?
I don't know whether it's going to be fencing. We haven't worked on the plans for it, but it'll be barriers that meet the state requirements for safety.
Okay.
What is a five stand? I know the pheasant tower, you throw pheasants off a tower, people shoot at them, which they have some-
That's your skeet stands. You have your two towers that shoot out, and you have five stations, so they call it a five stand.
Gotcha. So you're not planning on any deer hunting, rifle hunting out on this preserve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. This is a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application may do so.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak in favor of one small part of this application before later speaking in opposition to another?
Ms. Smith, I will certainly allow you that privilege if you would state your name to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Julian Smith. As a red-blooded American boy growing up in the South during the Second World War, I used to help supplement my grandparents' lunch menu instead of us having to eat chicken from the backyard. I would go out with my grandfather's .410 shotgun and blast a squirrel out of one of his pecan trees, sometimes two squirrels, if I could pump quick enough. And then I would skin him, gut him, and have my aunt Estelle, the cook, pop him in the pot with stew pot. So I've got, and I was in a small town with close by neighbors, who never objected. Well, I was armed. So I think that the raising of quail and doves and ducks on some of the conservation land is better than having a lot of houses with septic tanks. So I really, I really like the idea of a sporting club. Maybe I'll join. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. Thank you, chief. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application?
My name is Bill Gussman. I live on St. Simons. And I do have a question for the applicant. Is this preserve going to be a private facility wherein the public will not be permitted to come in without a membership? I love to do five stand. It's, it's a lot of fun. And the only other one we have within miles is Sea Island, which is real expensive. So if you're going to put one out here in the county, it'd be a great benefit to me. So I would definitely be in favor of it, both skeet and trap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gussman. Would the applicant like to address that? Is it going to be a membership, or is this going to be a?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that has yet been decided, but it's a good idea. The thought is meant of the possible, to possibly open it up. One of the owners, I forgot to, and I apologize to one of my clients who's here tonight, Mr. Pete Bailey, who's in the audience back here, but anyway, he's here. There's been a fair amount of discussion about the availabilities of hunting and especially shooting, the sport of shooting, as Mr. Gussman said. So if, if we can get this first phase off the ground, we could very well open it up to, it's, again, down the road. That's a huge piece of property.
Thank you, sir. Are anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Saying none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Julian Smith again, commonly known as Good Old Putty. There's so many things to object to about this, this application, this development, that it's gated, that, don't get me started. So I'd like to focus on one issue. I'm in opposition to modifying what your agenda identifies as provisions for wastewater treatment, to allow private septic systems for this entire development of 3,343 acres, except for two existing residential units that are already tied into the public wastewater system. And after that long preamble, and because you have a very crowded agenda tonight, I'll be as brief and pithy as possible. And when I promise to be pithy, I'm not withbing. You will, never mind. You will remember that late in your meeting on July 20th, Commissioner Coleman, who represents the entire county, objected to allowing septic tanks in leach fields at the development, at this development. He said with some passion that, quote, "You just can't keep pouring sewage into the ground," unquote. In response, Commissioner Browning, who represents a portion of the county that includes this questionable development in question, lectured the board and the public with these words, quote, "We are going to be allowing septic tanks for a long time to come in Glenn County, or we're going to shut down development," unquote. Now, not content with invoking the either-or fallacy or abusing it, Commissioner Browning then called, claimed Commissioner Coleman was, quote, "Talking about shutting down development in Glenn County," unquote. He then boasted Glenn County has the most modern technology for private septic systems, and that, quote, "We have never had a major septic tank problem," unquote, and that the problems come from the joint water and sewer system. I wish Commissioner Browning could be here tonight to hear me congratulate him in these terms. Your president, Commissioner Browning, could not have done a better job defending the rising tide of crap in the golden showers of Georgia. I'm sorry, I meant the Golden Isles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying none, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I could make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
I raised my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, no, you gave me a thumbs up. I didn't know what you were doing.
I just didn't put the whole thing on.
Oh, okay.
Well, to, to, once again, support the anti-septic tank issue, once again, I can't say enough about the fact that when we continue digging these holes and putting our sewer in them, there's going to come a day when there's not going to be a whole lot of places for this stuff to go. And when that happens, you're going to walk out in your yards, you're going to walk out in your streets, and you're going to start realizing septic tanks don't work all the time. As I stated previously, I have lived with a septic tank for 22 years in Belle Point. I have witnessed raw sewage running out on the ground. I watched it drain out away from my house during Hurricane Matthew, several other tropical storms that came around. You ain't kidding nobody. Glenn County is saturated. You can't go down five feet in any area in this county and not hit water. And, you know, you're just, you're not, you're not using logic and common sense here when you just keep approving more and more septic tanks. And as I said to you, Mr. Bishop, the other day, if you're going to put a million bucks in a recreation center, why don't you put another million bucks to extend the doggone sewer down Buck Swamp Road? Let's do something for the community, not for the, not for the people that stick in these millions of dollars in their pockets. I think the environment around here affects everybody in Glenn County. What you're talking about doing is what's going to affect that group of people that's going to buy lots out there and build houses, which is the bigger picture. I just can't see us continue to keep supporting this septic tank thing. And in reference to what Mr. Browning said, he was, and Mr. Putty said there, that's right, he was insinuating that I was downplaying development. I'm not downplaying development. I'm just saying, developers, if you want to build in Glenn County, have your budget set up so you're going to pay for the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman? Commissioner? Second the motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Standall, second by Commissioner Strickland. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the, to approve the proposed zoning decision as presented, signify by raising your right hand? That is five, two, one.
Opposed.
Want to oppose?
Opposed.
So, Mr. Chairman, before we go on, can I just bring, I've been getting some text messages. Apparently, up there upstairs, I'm being told that Channel 99 might work, but there's some people that can't receive the broadcast on a laptop or computer. Does that ring a bell to you guys? Is there anything you can do about that? You think it's working? All right, maybe they, maybe they're misusing their computer. I'll pass that on to them. I'm sure they're going to be happy to hear that. Sorry.
All right. All right. Received citizen input regarding the comprehensive plan. The purpose of this hearing is to brief the community on the process to be used to develop the comprehensive plan, to discuss opportunities for public participation in development of the plan, and to obtain input on the proposed planning process. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker, with a maximum time for all comments limited to 30 minutes. Ms. Thompson?
I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you know, Glenn County is undergoing the process of updating our comprehensive plan that will be due in October of 2018. That plan is a requirement from the Department of Community Affairs, and it is required for us to maintain our qualified local government status. So far, we have engaged some consultants to assist us through this process, EPG with RS&amp;H Consulting. Tonight is the first required hearing from DCA. The purpose of this hearing is to brief the community on the process to be used to develop the comprehensive plan, to discuss opportunities for public participation in the development of the plan, and to obtain input on the proposed planning process. Tonight, Mr. Ed D. Tomaso from EPG is here, and he will provide you a brief- Tonight, Mr. Ed D. Tomaso from EPG is here, and he will provide you a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Again, I'm Ed D. Tomaso with Ecological Planning Group. Pam pretty much told you everything I'm going to tell you. I just have slides to illustrate it. But as she said, we are kicking off this comprehensive planning process. There are two required public hearings, one at the beginning of the process and one at the end. So really, the purpose of this meeting tonight and this hearing is just to let everybody know that this process is going on, how they can get involved, and really what it entails. So just really quickly, what is a comprehensive plan? And this is really, a comp plan is that 50,000-foot look at your community, an assessment of the community. It looks at the questions of where are we now? Where do we want to go? And that's as we go through, we'll develop a vision and goals, needs and opportunities on where the community decides they want to go, and then how we're going to get there, which is really the implementation element of the plan. So as Pam said, comprehensive planning is a requirement in the state of Georgia. It's regulated by the Department of Community Affairs. The county's plan is due to be adopted, needs to be adopted by October 2018. It actually needs to be submitted to the state ahead of that because they allow a 40-day period to review it and provide feedback. So we would be looking to get through this whole process by August to come back here, present a final plan, final draft plan, to submit to the state at that time. And the reason for doing it, among other reasons, is to maintain the qualified local government status, which, what is that? It's a program that the state has that makes you, if you are a qualified local government, it makes you eligible for different grants that are offered by the state, grants by the Department of Natural Resources, Jifa. So if you fail to keep this status, you would be ineligible for some of these programs that the state offers. There's a number that I didn't, there's a bunch of them that I didn't name, but just a couple of the common ones. So as a state requirement, there's actually a, this is going to be an outline of what the plan looks like, and these are the required elements according to the state, that you look at, community goals, you identify needs and opportunities, you develop a community work program, and then depending on what type of community, there's additional items that are required for Glenn County because they're zoning, they're required to look at land use, because it's part of an MPO, they have a transportation element, and we'll be looking at some additional elements. We will follow the state's requirements to make sure that we meet and we hit on every one of those, but we're not necessarily going to be steered by entirely. We like to keep our process somewhat organic and to see where the community takes us, but we will, at a minimum, meet all of these requirements. So what are the benefits of comp planning? It gives people a solid vision for where the community wants to go. It's a community-guided process, so getting that input from people tells the government where the people that live here feel the community needs to go, and it gives them some tools for making decisions as they move forward. Just an interesting slide here. A study was done by an economist at UGA that showed that people that have comprehensive plans that they follow and implement, it leads to more economic development, and it's been shown to lead to job creation. And this goes for plans that are good plans and poor plans, which obviously the county's not going to have to worry about. But just a plan that's in place, that's being implemented, leads to better economic development. And the reason is, is because it shows that the government is trustworthy, it shows they have a vision, and that they're trying to follow it. So it makes people feel more comfortable when they're making decisions about their property and looking to invest. So just kind of an interesting study. The general process that we're going to follow is illustrated here, and currently, we're in the process of data gathering. We like to take on this part right at the beginning of the process. We've been through a number of comprehensive plans when we've gotten to the end of the process, and people say, well, have you seen our bike plan? Or have you seen our strategic plan? That would have been nice to know at the beginning of the process, so we could have taken all that information and included it in our analysis. So we're in the process now of looking at collecting data and seeing what kinds of plans the county already has, what's out there. The next part that we're going to take on is public involvement. There's going to be a lot of different opportunities for people to be involved at their own level of comfort. As we move through that process, we'll be identifying goals, needs, opportunities within the community, and we'll develop that implementation plan that'll really be the teeth of the comprehensive plan to try to achieve those goals. Shown in green here is just something as an example, but a future ordinance update. That's not something that we're actually doing as part of our scope of work, but it would be more of an example of a recommendation that may come out to help achieve a different goal that may be identified throughout the process. So as we're data gathering, we've been looking at census data, different other data sets, the Department of Labor, kind of those larger-scale data sets. But we've also kind of gotten in the weeds, working with the county, existing plans, the county's GIS system, trying to figure out what kind of data exists at a local level. The closer we can get to the ground here, the better the data sets we're going to be working with. So, and plus, the census is, you know, we're eight years through when the last census was collected, so a lot of that data has been estimated at this point. So we're looking at all the different data sets that are out there and trying to pull all that information together. We've been working with a project team of county staff, and we're in the process of looking to appoint steering committees that are going to help guide this process. And as you can see, the illustration there shows all the different information and all the different things that we're going to be collecting and going through, almost work into this funnel where at the bottom of it is the steering committee that's going to help us work with that information and decipher what's the most important stuff to include. So some of the other elements that are going to be a part of the process is a community survey. This would be something that we have up on the county's website. There's actually going to be a dedicated comprehensive plan webpage that's going to have some interactive map applications and some different ways to work with the community and make it a little bit more fun to be a part of it. We're going to have a booth set up at the Coast Fest. There'll be an additional public hearing. There's possibly going to be more presentations as we go through this to the commission. We'll have open houses where people can come and take part in different exercises that we'll have. We're looking at exploring different ways to get youth involved, and that might be coordination through the Board of Education and how we might be able to get an art contest or some different avenue that we can involve some of the youth. So there's going to be, we won't be short on ways to get people involved, and this is something that is going to be flushed out by the steering committee once they're appointed and we start meeting with them. So the future development strategy, as we go through the land use analysis component of the plan, we will be looking at what the state, DCA, identifies as character areas, and it just looks at different areas within the community and what the overarching character and land use makeup is. And that would be the basis for developing the county's future land use map. And this is what they currently have. We'll start with this, and we'll start to look at areas that maybe have changed over time, and we'll see where the county wants to go and amend this future development The needs and opportunities, as we go through this, these are just some examples of areas that we would look at and identify needs and opportunities for. It is not necessarily comprehensive, and we might not hit on every single one of these, but these are just a couple of examples, and these will help us frame the elements and the activities that go into the community work program. So that being said, the community work program is the implementation component of the plan. So all the different goals and the vision and the needs and opportunities and all the different things that we've come up with as we go through this process, the community work program is how are we going to get there? So it looks at specifically identifying activities, assigning a timeframe to it, a cost, who's going to be responsible for doing it. So it gives a little bit more ownership on these things that the county and the citizens say that they want to achieve as part of this process. So as of now, as I said before, we're really in the data gathering phase, and we're going to be kicking off our public involvement in the month of September, which will last about five months, four to five months. Then we'll be taking all that data in and coming back with draft reports. But the purpose of tonight is to get some public comment, so we can have some feedback at the beginning of the process that we can make sure that we take into consideration as we move forward. So I'd like to offer the opportunity to answer some questions and listen for public comment.
Any questions? All right, I think we're ready for...
Yes, sir.
Will you provide, I guess, trends, summaries of the data that you are collecting to all of us, really?
Yeah. We've got, we'll have a full, about the data that we're collecting, yeah, we'll have a full data assessment appendix to the plan, and it'll look at everything from population, age, housing characteristics, and even facilities, services, infrastructure. It'll be an appendix to the document, and it's usually...
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, like, you're gathering that information now.
Mm-hmm.
When will we get any of your initial analysis of that?
Yeah, well, we're pretty close to having all that, I mean, enough to share. You know, by the time we go into our public steering committee meetings, that's, as part of those meetings, it's important for people to see at the very beginning where we are now. So we'd like to go in there with a lot of information and be able to show people what we have already, so that they can start to think ahead.
Okay. I think that first meeting for the mainland, maybe September the 5th, is just right around the corner, and then the island shortly, a week later, maybe?
Yep. First Tuesday for the mainland steering committee, and then the second Tuesday for the islands.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the consultant?
Yeah, just, one thing troubles me a little bit is the size of the steering committee. Tell me about your experiences with that. Tonight, we're going to be asked to appoint seven members. The planning commissions have already appointed three.
Yep.
Seven will be chosen by demographic data, but 17...
Sure.
...in a two-hour meeting.
Yeah.
Is that workable? Is that...
It's a workable group, yeah. We'll get our, roll up our sleeves, and we'll have a pretty specific agenda. I think the challenging part, when we have a steering committee that's that large, is just keeping focus. It's sometimes easy to go off on a tangent, and it'll be up to us to keep everybody focused and to have a strict agenda that we keep to. But it's not an unusually large group. You know, your typical group might be 10 to 15 people. This is 17. Some people might not be able to make it. So I think we have a pretty good working group, and I wouldn't be, I'm not nervous that it's too large.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, public comment. Anyone like to come to the podium?
Sandy Dean. I live in the mainland. I got a question. Forty is, you got seven citizens from the mainland comprehensive plan, and then forty-one, item forty-one says you got seven citizens to serve the islands. I take it that St. Simon's, Sea Island, Jekyll Island, Hawkins Island? So why would someone that lives on Hawkins Island be representing the mainland?
Could I answer that?
Sure. I can.
I think you're speaking specifically about Mr. Ben Slade.
I am.
Okay, if you read the rules of engagement in the process of selection, you can either live in the mainland or the islands, or you could own a business in the mainland or the islands, and he owns a business in the mainland.
What business is that?
I can't tell you.
I can tell you, he sold it.
Well, you know, I don't know what to tell you. You know, I don't want to sit here and have you argue with me, but that's, that is my understanding, and the people that clear these things have cleared it. Okay.
Well, I think it's wrong.
I'm Bill Gussman. Spent a little bit of time working with the school system. I do have two questions for you guys in terms of information that you've been gathering. Are you familiar with the GUDE group? G-U-D-E. No. The GUDE group is a consulting group that has worked with Glenn County school systems for about the last 10 years. They were instrumental in developing the review process for the e-splots, and they're a very, very competent organization, and they put together tremendous amount of information about this county as to where people live and where kids are. And they've developed a forward-looking plan for where development is going to take place on the north end of the island, and it's one of the reasons that the school system considered purchasing land out around 99 to potentially build elementary schools out there. So that group is responsible for helping the school system find out where the growth in the county is going to take place, or where they need educational facilities. So I would urge you to go check with them. That's one element. The other is, the school system has a commuter program called Edulog, and they can plot out where the school buses should go all over the county because they know where people are living and how many kids live in an individual house. Tremendous amount of information. They're having a few bugs with the program right now because they're just getting started with the school year, but if you can get a hold of that one, that would be a tremendous computer program to look at to see where people live and how many kids live in these houses. Because it's a requirement here that the kids go to school, so they have to all get registered, and the school system has to figure out where they are. So that information is in there. And the last point is, Joint Water and Sewer has a marvelous computer program. If you haven't seen it, they can plot out every single fire hydrant in Glenn County and how far it is from everybody's house. And that's how I know, there's one that's 100 feet from my house. And it's a great computer system, so go talk to the Joint Water and Sewer. They've got a lot of information for you. Thank you.
I'm Julian Smith, and this is the last time you'll be hearing from me tonight. I have my timer with me, so I won't go over. I might risk going over because I've spent a lot of time studying the rules of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. I have received documents from the county about the blind application process. I had to file a GOAL request, a Georgia Open Records request, and pay for the staff work to redact a lot of information. Let me start by saying I'm glad this is a comprehensive plan and not a master plan. I've worked on a number of master plan processes for both a community where I was an elected official and on several university master plans. I'm tired of master plans. They're so sexist a name. I'd much rather have a mistress plan. I found it interesting and significant that, given the relative populations on St. Simon's and the mainland, a statistically larger percentage of island residents applied for direct appointment by county commissioners than did mainland residents. And let me give you a statistic here. Nearly twice as many applicants representing only about a quarter or a fifth of the population of Glenn County have applied for appointment by you than candidates from the, applicants from the mainland. You don't have as great a choice for the mainland. Now, there is, of course, a problem with statistics, and that Mark Twain populized equip. There are three kinds of lies: lies, damn lies, and statistics. Let me provide a few simple statistics that I've drawn from the Survey Monkey questionnaire, questions for blind applicants for appointment to the steering committee. A total of 75 citizens applied for appointment. Of those 75, 46 indicated they live on St. Simon's, 12 on the mainland, north of the spur, nine on the mainland, south of the spur, seven in Brunswick, and only one on Jekyll Island. Of those 46 who say they live on St. Simon's, 22 identified as white males, 18 as white females, one as a black female, and four males and one female did not indicate their ethnic... not indicate their ethnic or racial identity. I don't know what use the consultants will make of that information. I wish them luck. Counting rag, only ten of the seventy-five respondents indicated they were black or African-American, which seems rather underrepresented, while a total of four declined to indicate their ethnic identity and two identified as either other or two of more races. What seems most obvious and not at all surprising is that a much higher percentage of St. Simon's island residents applied, both through the direct and the blind process, than mainland residents. And that a higher percentage of mainland residents seem to be from the suburban areas north or west of the city of Brunswick. So, this is really a comprehensive plan that's going to be driven primarily by suburbanites. Going beyond raw data, the responses to the last question on the blind survey, this is the Survey Monkey questionnaires. What issues do you feel is most important for the future of Glen County? Those answers range from the needs of veterans to thoughtful mini essays covering many issues and not just one that was asked for. What the Survey Monkey questionnaires, questions do not reveal is how many of the blind process applicants are prepared to attend steering committee meetings or do their homework, how many are prepared to read and understand this document, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Rules, et cetera, et cetera. It's a thick document. So, good luck in finding fourteen good men and women from the mainland and the islands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else? All right.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Wait just a second. I understand that item four, the applicant, has arrived and if we could address that this time. And that is consider the transfer of a license for 2017 alcoholic beverage license issued to Toucan Ale House, 2450 Perry Lane Road, Brunswick, Georgia, Chief Dory.
Gentlemen, the applicant is present now. He is required and he does meet the requirements for consideration for his license.
All right. Questions for staff?
It's number, item number four for the commissioners at Toucan.
Yep. The, this is a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application may do so. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application may do so. Being known, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the application signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve all items on consent agenda general business, consent agenda finance, consent agenda personnel, with the exception of any item any individual commissioner desires to pull.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving consent agendas, those consent agenda items signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. All right, appointments. Consider approval of the proposed steering committee appointment procedures and steering committee ground rules. Ms. Thompson and Mr. Worley.
Good evening, commissioners. The item before you tonight is formally adopting the appointment process and the ground rules for the steering committees that you'll be appointing later tonight. Y'all have gone over the appointment process a couple of times, so I won't belabor that point unless you have further questions about that. This is just a mechanism for y'all to formally approve that appointment process. Rather than write bylaws or anything like that, the ground rules cover most of how the, what bylaws would normally cover, so that's why you're being asked to approve those ground rules as well.
All right. Any questions for staff? All right, we begin a motion.
Motion to approve the steering committee appointment procedures and steering committee ground rules.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. All right, consider appointment of seven citizens to serve on the mainland comprehensive plan steering committee. And that would begin with, I'm going to go by districts, and that would begin with District One, Commissioner Browning, who's not here but has sent his proxy.
Mr. Chairman, in the absence of Commissioner Browning, he asks the commission to consider appointing Makesa, hope I pronounce it right, Butler-
Marquesha. Marquesha.
Marquesha, whatever, Butler, to the mainland.
All right, all those in favor of Commissioner Browning's appointment of Marquesha Butler signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. District Two, Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Ben Slade to the mainland comprehensive plan steering committee.
All right, all those in favor of Mr. Ben Slade signify-
Point of order.
Yes.
Not order, but privilege. Are we positive that Mr. Slade meets the requirements as set forth under these guidelines with the question that was brought up?
Commissioners, as I understand it, he owns the former Barnett Bank Building as a lease hold business and because it's not specified as to what kind of business, that qualifies as a business.
What was it, Aaron?
The, the, the Barnett, old former Barnett, Barnett Bank Building, it's, they lease out the building to tenants, so they have a business.
Okay.
And under the guidelines and the rules that were set up, that is, that qualifies as a business.
All right, all those in favor of Ben Slade signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? All right, five to one. All right, District Three, Commissioner Strickland.
Scott Rifen.
All right, all those in favor of Scott Rifen signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. My opponent is Aaron Carone. All those in favor of Aaron Carone signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Commissioner Booker?
I offer for Darrell Dawson to be my opponent.
Darrell Dawson. All right, all those in favor of Darrell Dawson signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Commissioner Stanbaugh?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Harry James.
All right, Commissioner Stanbaugh's appointment is Harry James. All those in favor of Harry James signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Commissioner Coleman?
Well, that was mine, so now I got to go back and regroup.
Well, it's been good to talk to these folks.
Get it when that happens.
You, um-
Let's see, we've done-
Commissioner, if you would like, we can, you don't have to make an appointment tonight. You can do it the 24th. We can put it on the agenda if you'd, if you'd like to go back and, you know, take some time to consider it or whatever, but that's your choice.
Okay, so, I mean, it's not mandatory tonight. I'd certainly like to go back and regroup.
If you need to regroup, you can certainly regroup. Regroup. Would you like to do that?
Yes.
Okay, fine. All right, Ms. Thompson, are, are you presenting the mainland commission appointments? Mainland Planning Commission appointments?
Yes, sir. Good evening. For the mainland planning commission, the chair of that commission has selected the following mainland planning commission members for the steering committee. Gary Neville, Tim Murphy, and Bill Edgy. And the mainland steering committee members selected through the blind survey process, Ashby Worley, Missy New, Mary Harris, Jimmy Arnold, John Watkins, Terry Driggers, and Gene Moore.
Thank you very much. There's no, no vote required on those, no affirmation or anything else. All right, item forty-one, the mainland is settled.
Mr. Chairman, real quick-
Yes, sir.
Could we get a list of those people?
Yeah.
I don't wait that fast.
I'm pretty good, but I'll be sure.
Can you just email us to us?
Email.
Email all of this to us.
And with the, with their resumes as well, I think would be prudent.
Okay, they did not submit resumes. They completed the survey.
I'm sorry.
I can forward you those surveys.
Yeah.
But tomorrow, I will email you the complete list of the committee. The only one we'll be missing will be Mr. Coleman's selection for the mainland planning commission.
Okay.
Mainland, mainland steering committee.
And Bob, I'm going to count on you to remind me to make sure that's on the agenda for-
Cindy will take, Cindy will take care of that.
All right. Item forty-one, consider appointment of seven citizens to serve on the island comprehensive planning steering committee. And we'll do it the same way. District One-
Commissioner- Commissioner Browning requests that the board consider appointing, where did his name go? Mark Spaulding, excuse me, Mark Spaulding.
All right, all those in favor of Commissioner Browning's appointment of Mark Spaulding signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, I nominate Caesar Rodriguez.
All right, Commissioner Murphy's appointment is Caesar Rodriguez. All those in favor of Caesar Rodriguez, raise your right hand. Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
John Dow.
All right, Commissioner Strickland's appointee is John Dow. All those in favor of John Dow signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? All right, it's five to one. My appointee is David Pope. All those in favor of David Pope signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Commissioner Booker?
My nominee is William Mounts.
Okay, Dr. Skip Mounts. All those in favor of Dr. Mounts signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Commissioner Stanbaugh?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ann Ambrose, please.
Okay. Ann Ambrose is Commissioner Stanbaugh's appointee. All those in favor of Ann Ambrose signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. And Commissioner Coleman?
I'd like to nominate George Ragsdale.
All right. Commissioner Coleman's appointee is George Ragsdale. All those in favor of George Ragsdale signify by raising your right hand. How many we got? Four? All right, all those opposed? It's three? Okay. Huh?
I think it was-
Four, four to two, that's right. We're, okay, George Ragsdale is appointed. And Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir, thank you. The island planning commission members that were appointed to serve on the steering committee are Odessa Rooks, Patrick Duncan, and Ed Meadows. And the citizens selected through the blind survey process are Nicole Rogers, Lynn Graybill, Rosalyn Shepherd, Elaine Cornell, Justin Callaway, Martin Seaman, and Donald Myers.
Thank you. And if you would, shoot us a little note on those as well. Thanks so much. All right, under general business, consider authorizing the purchase of two Pierce Fire Pompers and one platform aerial truck as specified in an amount not to exceed $2,336,639 with funding to be provided by ACCG's lease purchase program. The purchase is subject to approval of ACCG lease purchase agreement by the Board of Commissioners. And who's doing this? Ms. Miller?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. This is the item to purchase the fire trucks in the FY18 budget. We've had this come up a couple of times and to get the lease purchase through ACCG. And the rate was 2.36%. ACCG sent out a bid and the only respondent was BB&amp;T. So, this is a request to actually purchase those fire trucks.
All right, questions for staff? Yes, sir.
We got a firm number. We got a firm number.
Yes, sir, we do. We are going to make sure that-
Are they really cool trucks?
They really are. They are neat trucks. They really are.
Sorry, I couldn't- I wasn't trying to be smarty, but I just wanted to make sure we got a firm number.
I understand. Yes, sir.
The discount, the discount is included in the price, so this is a much cleaner way to do it, I think, than, for any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the purchase of two pumpers and aerial truck.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the fire trucks signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Number forty-three, last but not least, consider approving change order number one for rebuilding the St. Simon's Island Marina docks destroyed by Hurricane Matthew, I'm going to change that to damaged by Hurricane Matthew, to Intron Technologies, Inc. from Jacksonville, Florida, in the amount of eighty-five, two fifty-seven, forty-eight, with funding to be provided by the Revenue Stabilization Fund Rainy Day Fund with reimbursement from FEMA Fund completion of the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. As you can remember, we awarded a contract for about $225,000 and we had additional money through the FEMA reimbursement process. And so, we went out there to, the initial scope of this project was to just do the north because that's all we thought we had money for, the north part of the marina. But with the additional money, we went out there and, and conducted a change order or looked at a change order to scope and fix the rest of the marina so that the whole marina is back to a better condition than it was before the storm. And so, this, this change order does that.
Any questions for Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, I had this placed on general business for one reason, one reason only. The amount of money's not that great and, of course, the funds are available. I have concerns and I know that Commissioner Murphy has also expressed the same thing in terms of the contract we currently have on this facility. And I wanted to bring this up so that the board kind of puts it on our radar. We need to review this contract.
You're talking about the lease?
Yes, the lease, excuse me, the lease on this property. The, the people that are currently operating this marina were required to have insurance, et cetera. They didn't have the money to do that, so I think we need to look and see, you know, how this may need to be structured in the future, moving forward, just to protect, you know, the county.
I agree, Commissioner, and I know Commissioner Murphy's been on this as well. As a side note, I was told today that the, the group has their $26,000. They've, so they're, they have, they have the money in hand for the matching, for the matching funds and so.
So, that's the local match. They have a state match and a federal match, so the county won't be putting any money up.
So, it's twenty-six thousand dollars, these people.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is the same group that was, it's the yacht club?
Yeah, this is the same one.
No, not the yacht, not the yacht club. This is Gascoigne, at Gascoigne Park. This is St. Simon's Boating and Fishing.
This is the same one we discussed before.
Yes, the same one we discussed.
Yeah, it's the same one. Yeah, it's not called the yacht club, yeah.
Yeah, it's important to know that distinction, Commissioner Booker. The yacht club is across the causeway over at that little private development, right to the right as you come on the island. This is what they used to be called, the St. Simon's Boating and Fishing Club is now called the St. Simon's Marina. But it's the one that we've been discussing and I am very impressed that they were able to raise their matching funds in this short order of $26,000. And I do know that they have scheduled or maybe even have met with our attorney regarding the need for the insurance, so we don't revisit this issue if there is another hurricane event or other event that damages properties at this cost. So, it's, you know, I think we're incrementally moving forward and I'm hopeful.
Well, I guess my concern was the public knowing that it was a county facility.
Well, they're addressing, yeah, they're addressing the signage.
And I think there's, there's several solutions and obviously, information is number one, but this, Mr. Austin has helped with the signage, although the signage is not perfect yet, there is a project working on all the signage for all of the county. So, it's improved to a great extent. They will at some point get together with the IT people and try to improve the links on the Parks and Recreation aspect of the county website. I think that's, that's very important. There are a few other issues that need to be discussed, but we are slowly getting to where we need to get and I'm, I'm hopeful, although we're not there yet.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make two comments. Number one-
Number one, about the insurance that y'all are talking about. As obvious, insurance on a dock is gonna be extremely expensive. I remember the statement being made back when I first came on this commission, that there was a question about how the contract read. I think we leased it to them for like a dollar a year, or something like that, and they're to maintain it. And of course, they have to maintain it by raising their own revenues. And the rest of that statement was, when you consider maintenance and upkeep and everything else that goes along with a marina, and boat storage, and all other things that are affiliated with that area over there, it was said more than once, I don't think Glen County wants to get in the marina business. And so what I'm trying to get to here is, these guys have, the St. Simons Boat, what's the name of it?
Marina.
No, 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 what was it?
Boating and Fishing Club.
Boating and Fishing Club. That's still in existence. And they pay eighty-five dollars a year, and they were getting a deal when they put in and take out their boat. However, if you were not a member, then you paid a couple of dollars extra. But that was encouraging their revenue source to come in, so they could have funds to work with over there. You know, I'm here to tell y'all, this insurance thing is gonna knock a huge dent in that. Personally, my agency does not insure a dock, but one of that magnitude, and being this a public area, I'm thinking they're gonna have a huge, huge payout now that they don't have. And that was two of the things. I just wanted to comment about the insurance, and also comment about the Boating and Fishing Club is still in existence, the name's not on the sign. Because, I mean, they don't have any other way to support that thing. If they didn't have that membership, you couldn't support that thing over there with ten, twelve-dollar fees. I mean, that's just...
Commissioner, you make a good point about the insurance, and I think the county attorney's on this and well aware of the, I think we've got to be smart about this, and maybe figure out how to do some kind of reserve fund, and not just throw good money after bad. But we're working on that, and hopefully, we're on time for fruition here. Very quick. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't think anybody objects to them having, you know, charging different fees for, if you want to call it membership, as long as everybody understands that it belongs to Glen County and it's open to the public.
Yep, okay. Commissioners, any other comments, questions?
I guess, and I know, and I don't want to prolong this, but when we're looking at this, we certainly have to look at the membership, what's required for membership. Because I have no idea, other than the eighty-five dollars. There may be something else that prohibits the general public from becoming a member.
Thank you. Might have to have a boat.
Yeah, I have looked at that, Commissioner Booker, and it's, there's no other more stringent requirements, other than being a boater, showing up and paying your eighty-five bucks. So they are very inclusive, they just need to get the word out there, that as Commissioner Strickland said, this is a county property and a county facility that needs to be utilized by more than four hundred-plus people in a county of eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, bottom line is, it's going to be reviewed, this contract.
Sure.
It's gonna be, I've already spoken with everyone.
Put our gold shield on it.
Murphy has, Commissioner Murphy did.
Stamp it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the amended amount signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That is unanimous. We are now, I think, going to have to adjourn to executive session to discuss legal and personnel, or just...
Just pending litigation, Commissioner.
Pending litigation.
Mr. Chairman, motion to go, make a motion to go into executive session for pending litigation.
Mr. Snyder, the Marine Snapper Grill would be nice, but we'll take tacos. So...
Thank you for all you do for our community.